May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Stand for the place of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do we have any public comment? If you'll come to the podium and give your name.
Ron Hoskins.
Okay.
I want to speak to the issues of dust on J-53, County Road J-53, that runs east from Shamball. I left my notes at home, that's probably a good thing, I'll try to give you the Cliff Notes version.
Thanks, Ron.
So, it's a dangerous situation. It's not your normal gravel road. The rock trucks start passing us towards Rock Quarry before seven in the morning, isn't that right? And continue till I think they close at four. But when they go by, enough vacuums created that it just makes a dust storm. And same thing loaded going the other direction, but when we pull out on the road, we have to wait and wait after the gravel trucks gone by for the dust cleared before we can tell if someone's coming and it's safe to pull out. And many times that's happened to me. I cannot recall a time in my youth since earliest recollections that that road was not surfaced, sealed. And occasionally it was torn up in the summer to redo it. But other than that, until the last several years now, when it was torn up earlier and they ground the lives sewn in, which they did a good job JD, we have just continued to have year after year after year of dust. And even chuckles are starting to appear now, even though the limestone was dug in. But it's a problem for us. It's a problem for my grandchildren who we thought it'd be a good educational thing for them to come up here today. And we've had, they live just down the road from us, I told them how Christina was in Page County, Iowa. And it is, except for the dust, it's a problem. And we've mowed a strip through the ditch so they can walk up or whatever, riding a little four wheeler through the ditch to our house to visit. But crossing the road is an issue because it is on the other side of the road, so that's another safety concern. And I don't know if that's our own impressions that we've had or we've been led to believe year after year that this was going to happen next year or in the future, soon in the future. And it continues to go on and on, and I understand maybe some things are on the books now that is slated for resurfacing next year, starting next year. I certainly hope so, because it is a problem. And my wife came from Chicago, adapted to the farm great, enjoys it, says she'd never go back to the city. But there's this little issue we've got. And we feel like we're a forgotten corner in that part of, McCannah Township actually. And we may not be, I'm certain we probably aren't be, are not, but it feels that way. And we think it's time for something to happen, it needs to be sealed. And this is just my appeal, let's make it happen sooner than later, please. It needs to happen. In the last year and a half, I've developed a medical condition. Sheriff would want to look at my bag first here, but I have to show you this here. This is how I mow a yard.
I'm sorry.
Pardon?
When you first got up, I didn't recognize you, so sorry about that.
This is the way I mow the yard. Particulate mask is not adequate, I can't tolerate dust. And I thought maybe on a weekend I could mow, rock trucks wouldn't be going, but that's, the yard is just laden with dust and fogs out, and it's not a good situation. So I don't know if anyone else wants to speak to the issue or not, but those are some of my initial thoughts, I'm sure I left something out.
Thank you, Ron, you're right there on that corner and sure you get it all when you come around. So you're right there on that corner where, yeah, where it comes around.
27, 7 feet, which is kind of right at all the hanging part.
Any other, okay, Jean?
I'm a little short. I'm Jean Wagner, the other half of Keith and Jean Wagner. We farm down there at Darrell's, and then his brother Paul lives further around the curve. But they bought the farms back in the 70s, his folks did, and that road was a paved road and they paid more for the land because it was on a paved road. And we had a question if, when you have a property on the paved road, do you pay more taxes?
I don't think that's true.
Okay, I didn't know, I just, that was a question.
I never heard, I've never heard that.
Okay, and then the idea with all the dust, especially going into harvest, you're going to have more equipment, you're going to have, and it's hard to see, it's hard to, when you're moving equipment, because those trucks come barreling down the road and you may be waiting for the dust to clear, like you say, and then all of a sudden another one comes. So I think that, I agree, I think it needs to be paved, it's been put on the agenda, it's been on the budget for years, and it seems like every time we turn around, it gets pushed back another year. So our thought would be, would OSHA even approve of that road in its present condition? Because it's basically a main road of transport for, on, for farm to town. And also, the gravel trucks have an option, it's not the only way to come to town. They can go south and go through Brattyville, and then you're not on a gravel road for very long before it's paved. And yet, they choose to come on the gravel road and make a hazard for everybody else when they have an option. It is a better option and a safer option. So our idea or thought would be to embargo that road against those big trucks until it gets paved. And then my other question was, how many years has it been since it's been paved, do you know?
Torn up, 2019.
2019, so now we're on six years of it being torn up. And instead, it was going to be a short, a short-term proposition when the wind turbines came in, it was going to be, as soon as they're done, we're going to get it paved for you. And it's still not done, and it's still, when is it proposed to be done now? 2026, so another year is going to go by before that happens. So our thought is that for the safety of the community down there, it needs to be paved as soon as possible, not even before 2026, I think it's, we've waited long enough and it should be a priority instead of put on the back burner as it continues to be. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments? On any subject? Okay. Okay, we'll move on to JD and maybe you can answer anything else on J-53 also.
Good afternoon, JD King, Page County Engineer, it's a fine day in Page County. And hopefully we'll get through this agenda.
We will.
Returning attention to the engineer update which was sent out yesterday afternoon. We're blading in the districts, knocking down windrows for the winter and cutting grass. Getting ready, we're out on some dirts for the harvest, preparing for the harvest, hauling rock with three trucks. Straight rafter wasn't working today, it was working yesterday. In the west part of the county, we have one mower running. Pipe crews doing pipe replacement on S Avenue northeast of town, several pipes on S. And we've got a couple guys working on handrails on wooden bridges, or wooden handrails on bridges. Turning our attention to the shop, we hauled a motor grader up to Atlantic. Yep, we're wiring harness. Number six, John Deere is ready for a service. We're starting our winter services on the tandems. One was in this today, I saw, supposed to be another one yet this week. The RDO field tech was down to our shop checking on one of the Mack tandems. Still waiting on a hydraulic cylinder for the bat wing mower. And putting tire on a pickup. Turning our attention to construction, we're doing construction paperwork, waiting on vegetation to improve to 70% coverage on the Essex Bridge and going to schedule sealing on the deck soon. We've got a couple guys up at Streets and Roads Conference in Des Moines, Jeff, the maintenance superintendent, and Nick are technician. And we've been working on accumulating some quotes for a mower tractor. We talked to some of the neighboring counties and they've got a lease, they lease a tractor for a couple of years. And the financials are very, they're very much better than purchasing a tractor for a couple hundred thousand bucks and a mower. So we're going to investigate that a little bit further. Questions about the engineer's update?
What do we do with the caterpillar tractor that?
It's parked.
Yeah.
I think we're going to auction it off as is, because we don't want to fix the motor and that, so that is just sitting. I have several items on the agenda, all in the engineer's update. The first is a preliminary design agreement with Galoon Burns. That's for NE08, which is a bridge on M70 north of town near 180th Street. It's over the Neely branch, this is a grant bridge. We haven't been, we made the cut, the application is in and they should know sometime this fall whether that grant's successful. We are not wasting money with the preliminary design agreement, even without the grant. We won't, we won't let the bridge in the same, on the same schedule, but the bridge abutments do need work. And it's a good, it's a good bridge to get replaced. We need approval of the preliminary design agreement for the NE08 bridge north of Clarendon with a Neely branch.
I hear a motion.
Make a motion.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here will be more. You can fill it out because then the three can.
I know.
There'll be more.
You got more?
Next item on the agenda is a funding agreement for the Yorktown Bridge projects south of Yorktown on L Avenue and 220th Street. This is a, this is a funding agreement for federal aid, we match it with our foreign market. Part of the paperwork that goes along with federal money. Indeed, that's the theme of this evening's agenda.
So we need a motion to approve. That agreement?
Make a motion to approve the agreement.
And I'll second that, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you, have the form here.
Okay.
Pass it over there.
And the next one is between DOT and Page County, non-discrimination agreement.
That's a Title VI thing. Title VI is part of the boilerplate that goes along with federal aid, we have federal aid, we use federal aid in the county, then we have to have a Title VI plan and coordinator. And the last time we did a federal aid project was last August of 2024. And now we have changes in personnel, so we need to update the form.
Okay. Okay.
So there's.
So you just need it because of new chair, chair?
Correct.
Okay.
This is the non-discrimination agreement.
Yes.
This is the one with the, between the DOT and the county of Page.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve that.
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Then we have another non-discrimination, right?
Then there's a second Title VI piece of paperwork for the US DOT.
Okay.
As the schedule would have it, they're holding a Title VI meeting in Atlantic tomorrow. Lisa Nelson, our office manager, will attend that training session. The fact that it happens coincident with our Title VI paperwork is coincidence.
Just on time.
But good to know, we'll be up to date, she would have probably came back and told us we had to update our paperwork.
Okay, and no motion on that one?
Make a motion.
I'll second that, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Do you have?
You need another one?
They were, yeah, I have stuff here.
Okay.
Like to introduce Becca Castle, she'll be talking about the remainder of the agenda items with us.
Before you step away, do you want to just reiterate what you said about J-53, it's on the?
Currently, it's on the five-year program for 2026.
Next year, okay. Okay. There's this one back to JD. Okay, thank you.
Hello, I am Becca Castle Loughlin, I'm Director for the Wabash Trace Nature Trail, or actually SWINT, Southwest Ocean Nature Trails Project is the name of our nonprofit. As you guys know, we are working on the Rap Park Connector Trail Project, which kind of has four main components. There's a new trail that will go along the south side of the East Nishamotna River between A Avenue and the Wabash Trace. There's some resurfacing of the trail, the asphalt portion from the East Nishamotna River Bridge to Sportsman's Park in Shenandoah. And then the crush limestone portion from the river to Highway 59. And then a city loop within the city limits in Shenandoah that will resurface the portion through Wabonse Park between the trailheads and then also add along Ferguson Road, an actual connection there. So we have been fundraising for this project for a couple of years now, I think. And we're really close to the end. We applied for the regional TAP funds and were awarded that. But some DOT rules, they, they made it kind of a new thing where nonprofits are allowed to actually be the applicant rather than having a local municipality or county be this project sponsor. But I don't think they were quite ready to, I guess, implement that. So there's a process that we would have to go through as a nonprofit to actually be approved to receive those funds because they're federally originating. But they can't really tell us what that process is. So we would like Page County to act as the project sponsor for both the TAP grant, which we have been approved for, and the SRT grant, which we have already submitted an application for. SWINT is planning on, you know, providing all the matching funds that are required for that and doing the maintenance. But as part of the application process, the DOT would need a resolution from Page County stating that they will ensure that it will be maintained for its intended use for 20 years and that they would provide the matching funds. And that's where the 2080 agreement comes in, it's just a separate agreement with, between SWINT and Page County stating that we will take that on instead of the county being responsible for it.
Is the money going to go through you or through the county?
So the $400,000 would pass through Page County to us or directly to the contractor. It doesn't really, I don't know.
Yeah.
So we can keep our, right?
That's what I think, it's okay, just double checking.
Yep.
And Page County had obligated $50,000.
Correct.
For this, five years, $10,000 a year earlier, so.
Yeah, so beyond that, we are not expecting anything else from Page County, just, you know, to act as a pass-through.
Okay.
And by doing that, we have to make sure it's maintained for 20 years because we do 2080?
Well, it's part of the application that you would have to agree to maintaining it for 20 years, but then the 2080 passes that responsibility on to us.
Passes on to you, gotcha, okay.
So the fifth, or the sixth, fifth, whereas, where it says that SWINT is committed to it, 20 years, so, yep.
So we'll just do normal 2080 agreement, just to pass through?
Yes. So we need to approve that 2080 agreement?
Oh, make a motion, can we approve the 2080 agreement?
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We had a meeting last night and our Board of Directors passed it as well, so I just need to collect the signature from our president and.
And then we have a resolution to approve that also.
Two resolutions, they're based on funding. With just this kind of funding, that just the subject we would call for them, that's, and the need is dealing with the media office as popular as the SWINT mission.
So we need a motion on 32-2025?
And 33.
So we're going to vote on them separate?
Yeah. Well, I guess.
All together?
Yeah.
My motion is we accept the 2080 agreement with 30, resolution 32-2025 and 33-2025.
Second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I mean, and you've got the things to sign JD?
Yes.
Okay.
On my second page.
Yep.
20 meetings. And then the resolutions have everybody seen, you know?
Are you done JD? Okay. Moving on to Michelle, wherever you are for the conservation update.
Michelle Spinagol, County Conservation Director. So we've replaced all the picnic grills over there at Nodaway with ADA compliant ones. Cut back brush on the trails at Pierce Creek, and I've got the majority of them at a 12-foot spread now for mowing, so that's nice for us on our equipment also. I did finally get an estimate for the two roofs for Pierce Creek pit toilets there and really rough shape from those storms. And it was a little higher than I thought, so we're probably going to have to do it on our own. Not a big deal, just got to get all the materials for it.
Did the storm damage them?
Mm-hmm.
Did you turn it into?
Last one, yeah.
Insurance, okay.
Okay, it was a lot higher, the estimate was, so.
Are you taking bids on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. We did have a new event, we tried on August 23rd, it was called Cops and Bobbers over at Rap Park. Had a pretty good turnout for the first time that we've ever done it. Unfortunately, the fish did not want to bite that day, they did not catch a single fish, so I felt bad for the kids. But they did get free donuts and prizes for at least showing up. We'll try it again next year, hopefully the weather's a little bit better and maybe we'll get a little bit better turnout. So we'll, we'll try it again next year. Started building a frame for an indoor pond for our office for educational purposes. We've been clearing lots of shorelines at Rap Park and Pioneer, getting those caught up this year so I can spray them next year and hopefully that woody brush won't come back again. After significant rains, all the roads needed blading, potholes filled again. There was an abundance of rock piled over at Ross Park from a couple of years ago, so we finally got that distributed throughout all the areas of the roads that needed it the most. Mowing is finally slowing down a little bit, so my two mowers can help me catch up on tree trimming and brush removal and stuff finally. I also, I had to replumb the women's shower at Pierce Creek Campground in order to replace a handle that was broken. So that was like a two-day project that I thought was going to take two hours. But that's pretty much all that's going on in the conservation world.
Okay. Looks like quite a bit.
There's always something going on.
Yes, I haven't asked, I didn't ask Kristen and I didn't. Yes, I haven't asked, I didn't ask Kristen and I didn't notice, have you, we paid for the road at Nodaway?
Yes, it was just on the last claim, yeah, yeah, so we're getting that all worked out and.
Everybody, are you getting comments on it?
Some, yeah, yeah. I thought maybe camping would pick up a lot from that, but it hasn't picked up a ton, but it's also the end of the season too, so. Yeah.
Probably getting used to the new.
Yeah.
It's really nice.
Yes, it is wonderful up there.
Yes. Well, do we have any other questions? From anybody? No?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Okay. Mid-American Energy, we have John Huff here in person.
Hello. So normally I keep the updates pretty Page County specific, but I was talking to KMA earlier about a bigger overview about where we're at as a project, so maybe I'll do a little bit of that here today just to give you a little bit of concept too. So there are 54 total wind turbines to be constructed. There are 22 that are completely constructed. Now, they're not commissioned, so they're not spinning yet, but they are up fully. There actually aren't any that are totally complete in Page County yet, but in that southwest corner of the Page County project area, there are three or so that are pretty well on their way. So all that to say that with all the different activities that go into construction, we're about halfway done overall, so we're getting there. What can I say? The component deliveries to the turbine sites, that should be winding down pretty well here next probably two weeks, which that's a good thing. Of course, the concrete trucks, you're not going to be seeing them out like you you might have been because the concrete foundation work is all already finished for the whole project, so there probably will be an increase in some of the crane crossings and things in the nearest future here in Page County, just because the project has, you know, moved this way from west to east, so. I know we've kept JD informed on that and will continue to do so. I know Todd's not here right now, so maybe I'll repeat it to him, but he'd asked about the building in Shenandoah. And I got, I made sure to get extra clarification on that, so it is basically an office building. Did you guys know where the Mid-American office is in Clorinda, the O and M building for, I think it's for another wind farm outside of this county, actually, but do you know the one by Ice House? That's, that's, that's what it's going to be, so there may be some spare parts and stuff stored in the back, but I drove by there today and it's not like it's a second lay-down yard or anything crazy, so I don't know. It would be misleading by saying there may be some stuff stored in behind the building or something, but it's not any big deal, I guess. Like, staging area seems somewhat dramatic of a way to put it, I guess, I would say. What else, what else would we got here? Think that is most of what I have. I know we're working on getting the FCC registration on that ADLS Aircraft Detection Lighting System. Trying to get that pushed through. I think there were some holdups on the FCC stuff. It's but we're trying to get that by October at some point. And all in all, we're hoping to get this all commissioned by the end of the year. It looks like we're still on pace to do it. There will still be some site restoration activities in Page County probably in the spring of next year, but everything should be built and hopefully we got, got them spinning by the end of the year.
Okay. Okay, people keep asking, so. I see lots of blades going on the Highway 25 pass.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. It shouldn't be too, too much longer of that, which I think everybody would be grateful for.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you in person. Okay. Our next thing is to discuss the abatement request from the City of Clorinda. Maybe we need to talk about our county ones first. And then we can look at that one. We have a we have a an opinion from our county attorney on the abatement of the county taxes. I was all ready to come in and say let's abate the county taxes this year. I did talk to one of our state legislators and he said he's been keeping an eye on what's going on with this, and he thinks it's kind of I won't say crazy, but that, you know, we're kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul when we're taking, when we're abating, or when we're paying taxes to the county because we rent our land or whatever. That's taking revenue away from where we're taking in for the county, for the taxes and for the people of Page County, but would you like to come up, Mr. Varley, and talk about?
The the issue regarding abating taxes on government-owned property, or in this case, county-owned property. I've done quite a bit of research in the Iowa Code. I've also been consulting with a point of contact at the Attorney General's Office, who is aware of this situation in our county as well as others. And the the general nature of taxation within the state of Iowa, as it's been determined by the Iowa Supreme Court in a 1965 case, is that taxation is the rule and exemptions are an exception. Therefore, tax-exempt statutes are to be strictly construed. Now, within Chapter 445 and 427, as well as in the Iowa Administrative Code, there are a number of situations in which a county can abate property taxes. Among them are some we've already seen for charitable enterprises such as a nonprofit 501(c)(3) type corporation, as well as the most obvious situations that arise in counties are tax sale certificates where there are back taxes on the property, or cities sometimes come to county board supervisors to obtain an abatement on property that has been turned over to them either because it's a nuisance or they obtained it through abandonment proceedings under the Iowa Code. There are specific exemptions for that within Iowa Code that permit a county board of supervisors to abate those taxes. I have reviewed Iowa Code and the Iowa Administrative Code, and I find no exemption for county-owned property that is not being used for a public purpose and for which we are drawing a rent or a profit from it. So ordinarily, county-owned property is exempt from taxation because it is used for public use and there isn't any profit being gained from it. For instance, if we have a county museum or we have a public park, we don't tax ourselves for that because it's being used for a public use. In the situation of the farmland that we are cash running, or I believe we have a building in Shenandoah which about half of it is rented out to the VA Affairs Office, the Veterans Affairs Office, rather. Obviously, that's publicly held property used for a public purpose and not drawing a profit from that. The other side of the building, as I understand it, is being rented for a profit. Again, to meet that three-part test, to get exemption, it has to be owned by the county. It has to be used for a public purpose, and we can't be drawing any kind of pecuniary profit from it. If it doesn't meet all three of those tests, we need to assess the tax against it, which the Iowa Auditor's Office has been telling us for the last couple of years. But I understand there are other counties that are looking at abating those taxes. We assess against ourselves. My recommendation in consultation with the Iowa Attorney General's Office as well as my own review of the Iowa Code would indicate that that would not be legal. Where there's a specific statute saying we have to tax ourselves without finding a specific exemption that would allow us to abate those taxes, I don't think such an abatement would be lawful, and I think it would be seen by the state as a simply a method of avoiding paying the taxes we owe. Thank you.
Something you brought up was if they were enough for not not-for-profit. And I'm wondering about Zion now that I think about it. I don't think Zion is for profit. But we can check on that. It's the alcohol and drug. They have on, they have a a building.
Yeah, Zion is who rents from us.
Yeah. And.
Yeah, they very well, may well fit into charitable.
But we still.
We still get rent from them, but they, but if they're not, if they're like a a non-for-profit.
Right.
And they provide to the different counties around the area, so I'm wondering if they're non-taxing.
I don't know if they are. I don't know. I I'm familiar with Zion, but exactly what their structure is, whether it's a 501(c)(3) type corporation or otherwise nonprofit, that I don't know. But if they are, then we can look at it as a charitable abatement of those taxes.
Even though we're getting rent from them?
Yes, if it's a nonprofit.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
We might look at that.
It may fit into one of those exemptions I said I can't find for.
That didn't even hit me until you mentioned that, so that may be something we need to look at. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. It wasn't the news I wanted to hear. I was all ready to come and abate tonight, but I guess we won't, so. I guess we need to just, we'll just have to pay the rent on the farm or the taxes on the farm and we'll check on Zion. So we will not be abating the taxes on that. Okay. But we will check on Zion. Okay. So we'll pay the farm. And the farm taxes amount to almost $10,093.86. So we'll be paying $93,000, or not, $9,386. Okay. Okay, and the other one is on, we've got abatement requests from the City of Clorinda. And I think we need to talk more with the City of Clorinda. We have three parcels that are houses or residential. And we have one for ag land where there were taxes, where they were receiving rent once they accepted that that ag land. So I think we could probably go ahead and abate the three residential properties. Not the ag land at this point until we talk further with the City of Clorinda. May I refer them to you? Okay, thank you. Okay, so would I, could I have a motion on Resolution Number 31-2025? Abating taxes for 222 South 19th, 317 West Grant, and 223 South 11th?
I'll make a motion. Accept Resolution 31-2025?
Okay, and I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay. All right. Okay, so then we move on to board communication.
Just that landfill meeting last Thursday night. Everything's going good?
Everything is going well, huh? Okay. Didn't have anything else, I don't believe, since last week. Okay, so next action is to approve the claims.
Make a motion to approve the claims.
I'll second those, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And discuss action meeting minutes from last week, September 2nd.
We'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
And I'll second those, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else? Okay.
Next week, that remind?
I, thank you. Yes, we have a reminder, we will not be meeting next week. Our meeting on September the 16th on Tuesday will not take place. But we will be meeting the next time on the September 23rd at 4:00 PM. So entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, we're 44.